...for Monday, December 10.
The Evin Voice.
The Evin Voice. High and Bond for the National Electric. Professional Services run it through 10/27/2018 as follows. Service running for the period will perform a course of agreement dated October 2nd, 2018. Services include review of private materials about peer review comments and attendance at public hearings. Total fee authorized is $4,800. Uh, two, what is it, voices, $4,800?
It matches.
And that's a peer review for the, uh...
For the...
Breezy, breezy letters of our city. Solar Fund.
What was the total amount that we charged the applicant for?
I believe it was $10,000.
Oh, for the...
It's half way there.
Yeah.
For the first, the first part.
With an understanding of more was needed then. Only motion to approve High and Bond's bill dated 10/27/18 for $4,200.
Third second.
Second?
Tom Favor.
Hi.
Hi. Good folks. Two show favor. We have a minute from Monday, November 26th, 2018. Only motion of the approval minutes from Monday, uh, November 26th, 2018. As ready. Third second?
Second.
Any discussion, commercial?
Ask the second one.
Cause June, don't, it don't. June's over. Any discussion? Our favorite.
Hi.
Just earlier, Norris Camp, Camp Station, Germany?
No. Oh, we didn't, you know, this was, uh, for other things.
So this is just for everybody now, a full reading of just regards to ethics commissions and how employees about restrictions. And gifts, you know, without to accept any gift worth $50 or more. Of this. You have ten, you can review it.
Want to see this?
No.
You're not getting a gift.
No. Point nine.
Um, we have, it's not on the list of the, uh, those documents. This is the, uh... Application for revision of site plan review. For Dickinson.
Do we want to follow it?
No.
What can we do?
My suggestion seems as more tolerant than, and the original decision was, was done last December. It's already there. Is this a whole new thing?
No, just some adjustments.
Some big adjustments. They've got solar panels now that move around with the sun all up and, and moving them around. That's a huge change.
But if you record, uh, the letter that was emailed to all of us from...
WDL.
WDL. One of their last sentences stated something to the effect of, "If this proposed revision is not approved, then the property or the company will proceed with what was approved." Okay. What was approved, previous, shred?
And because it states them quite heavily. Yeah, love it.
Is that a fourth?
Yes.
And so it, because it states, like, that in the...
Love it. Can't drag that down.
I don't know if we straightened it in, because they had to explain to us anyways what they're doing.
They were, they were, they already explained to us.
In order before we have to stick a little, you know, talk to you. They came before us and said, "We told them some minor changes we could have... Look, we could have addressed, but because they were, they were a little bit more involved, that we felt for me to..."
From, from the date stamp time, how soon do we have to provide a public hearing to the applicant?
It's three or thirty-five days.
We have to provide the date, you don't have to have a theory.
Yes. The date for public hearing?
Yes.
We have a set date.
It's a set the day, yeah.
Okay. So I think we should go for some time in January.
Um, or, like I said, it's a, it's a huge amount. By person, and this is just my opinion, I don't think it's a, a change, because the other one is done, already registered. The new management should come and leave. That's a done deal, it's already a year old, and again, another year to either start the project or that, that, uh, approval is done.
Well, that's... Has the moratorium been, been, um, looked at by legal?
Yes.
And they said the select board had the right to do that.
It's a temporary moratorium, and...
So what's, what's temporary?
Well, it asks, what temporary means, it was in that reasonable time, it's got it on front of the town, to the town of Oregon, which is...
But it's in effect.
It's in effect.
And that, and that was, that was approved by town council?
Yes. They did review it. I asked for it to be reviewed by town council, which I'm assuming that it is outside, if my understanding. It just needs to follow the process of going to the town to go, uh, to, go ahead with the moratorium, if you're not concerned. But I think we should listen to people have to say, is a, is a better system they're putting in place where it could be, you know, whether the plan, the, the, uh, is something better, or is something different, something worse?
Or can they, or would they consider just withdrawing that prejudice that they're going to get? Then they could come back with it after the moratorium.
Well, no, they, they don't know what's gonna happen with the moratorium. The town will say, well, in fact...
Moratoriums are that, so they're, as far as my thinking goes, that shouldn't even be involved. That shouldn't even been stamped.
Well, my thing is that, because they already have plans in effect, so they thought it improved, they make a change or something. That's my, my, my question is, does that come into play? Then it'll be my question to our town council, at what point does that come into play? Because they've already submitted plans, those plans that are approved, we do, okay, they want to make some changes to it. Does that allow for a moratorium, is a moratorium set out for any new... Also, yeah, so...
Those are the...
There's, I don't know, I'm really attached to that.
But it's a little second, yes, they want to have...
One and...
Rotating.
Yeah, the rotating, because they're shifting it down and over.
Is it the same space they're using, I mean, one more place?
In one area, as I read everything, one of the two areas is going to require less square footage. The second area will require more square footage of use. Uh, also, I believe it said that these rotated panels will be two feet, three feet shorter than height. I think that's what it said.
I think so, but I'm not there.
They'll say two feet.
You'd have to have a whole... Give you a view on that over here, it's like a whole red thing. These are entirely different panels. If I was living nearby there, I'd want to know which ones got reflected in my eyes in the middle of the day. Or you're gonna have to have really tall shrub here to start off.
I believe that was said also, wasn't it, that, uh, there was going to be additional plantings of our providing of screening among Morgan Street.
Because they were done.
Sure.
We get set this, yeah, instead of starting it up in this corner, we're starting it down. So now they're, they're using a little bit more.
So next interesting piece on this. The group by Jimmy, Lily, Bob, and Jay Joyce. I'm still not here for it.
Remember that? That's, that's...
It wasn't, yeah, I think it was, it was me, it was me, right?
You want...
This, yeah, this takes me out of this too, right, this difference.
Yeah, um...
Not the new one, not for long.
Right. See, I had...
You want some background, you're kind of like serving in the middle there? Well, it does show it on the, on the plan script.
What, it'll show it?
The layout and all that, so rock and...
Well, we got nothing to compare it to.
Don't be out, the ones we...
See, my question to our town council as far as if it's moratorium, does this, uh...
What constitutes a change?
Right, does this, will this impact the moratorium, just allow them to do it now, allow them to do it just... Eventually, you, whatever we decide or another, I want it to, okay, to decide that, because that could lead the town to that goal.
Let me ask this, since we are meeting again this week, Thursday, is that a question that can be asked of town council with an answer before Thursday? Before Thursday's meeting?
And I ask the question to Chris and ask the town council.
With a urgency...
Maybe like in the back this as soon as possible.
As well as, as well as, how long do we have to respond to, uh, the date stamp?
December 4th.
To, uh, getting a, a sc- a public hearing scheduled. If it's thirty, thirty-five days, or is there any... Because I can see the holidays being an issue.
So, yeah.
Why wouldn't we just schedule it? You want to schedule?
I would, I would say schedule it. In the meantime, get, get town councils who can have that, and then, and then when you're here, they can determine whether or not their changes fall under the threshold, what town council says is significant.
So why don't you want to schedule it here, for my state, January 2nd, Thursday, the 3rd? Or Monday, December 31st?
So now we can't do that.
Well, you could do.
We won't, but you are.
Because I've got a full personnel...
Less than that.
So I guess we're looking at maybe the 2nd or 3rd of January, Wednesday, Thursday.
Well, I mean, because I need to set the meeting now, probably wait till Thursday to find out from town council, if it was ready till Thursday, is that, or is that...
I don't, I don't know how the town council's gonna be, uh, determined, but, uh...
What information?
What he's gonna determine is significant.
For changes.
For changes.
Dickinson, is that a reading plate?
And then you gotta cancel if this is...
I don't think you can.
Yeah, that's why I gotta...
What, here?
Yeah.
Sure, keep going.
Well, because if, if all the certified registered letters go out, the only way it would be canceled is if town council told us with, with absolute. So then we have to send out additional letters, certified letters to the, uh, the others, and it's going to...
It, it wouldn't be the most lightweight, you know, you just put them on the door, say, "You know, it's canceled, if you can't notify everybody."
But then your applicant is paying...
What's that?
The applicant's paying for the... All of this, and they may not even give up.
But we have an obligation still. In other words, if we don't, and we don't get an answer from town council, and we don't get it scheduled, and we're supposed to have it scheduled, within, within that window.
Well, we, we're concerned the 30 days from that, didn't scan?
Then they can, I'm pretty sure that's correct, then they can do what they want by right.
Correct. However, is it gonna hurt to wait Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for our next meeting to see what kind of answers may come from town council and then schedule it?
But also...
Yeah, but right now, I'm sorry, right now, we're just trying to come up with a date so that we can get it scheduled if we have to. We're not gonna schedule tonight, we're not gonna...
Oh, I thought it would work.
No, we can't post it tonight, Kathy's gonna post it for us.
I understand, so, yeah.
Right now, we're looking at a date that'll work.
But if Kathy posts that, we think tomorrow, she won't post it there.
Well, I'm asking number two, is it 30 days to set the meeting, or the 30, does the meeting need to happen 30 days, within 30 days of order, and set a date within 30 days from the 7th of 4th? Because if it's from December 4th, then we have till January 4th, the 30th, 7th, 8th, just to set a date, so, uh...
And that's something we need to find out.
Date works this much, the date works, the first one is the planning board's publishing, it must be this 13 days prior to the hearing. Okay. Well, that's a special... So you're looking at 65 days of the date. And it's just a little bit of a, for those of us who... I feel like I'm talking in circles.
I don't even see what you're saying, 65 days.
Down to...
Page one.
Oh, number, number...
This is a form.
Oh, and Kathy, we have more. Cast that down. See, number 10 says date of the planning board hearing must be in 65 days of date number two, there you go.
We would just let, we don't even do this.
But, 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 but this is referred to, though.
Pardon?
What does this refer to?
It says on the top there, uh, planning board hearing, relative to articles.
I would, I would think that this is more with regards to, to articles, or more articles that were imposed on town.
This is, uh...
On town meeting law.
That's what 65 days.
My open meeting law.
That's under state of time.
Okay. The planning board shall refer copies of the applicant, the application within 15 days of, of conservation commission board health.
Are you on a cycle plan or special plan?
Sorry. The planning board shall hold a public hearing within 65 days of the receipt of the application, and after due consideration and recommendation of the board, shall take final action within 90 days from the time of hearing. From the time of hearing or the time of closing of the hearing? Shall be deemed... Within 90 days from the time of hearing.
Okay, but we continue what happens. We got this discussion.
65 days.
So it's, we have plenty of time to...
Right. According to our files. So, should we, should we do like Will originally suggested, send this for roundtable?
I didn't suggest that. I suggested because the moratorium is in effect, we don't even consider it.
Prior to that, you suggested that it should go to the roundtable for discussion.
No, no, I'm talking to John.
Yeah, I know, I suggested it to the roundtable.
Should we, I suggested it to the roundtable.
Okay, if I did, I'm gonna blame, like, I was just guessing.
Should we, should we pursue, pursue the usual process? Send this for roundtable? And then, in the meantime, between now and Thursday, we get our questions answered regarding the moratorium through town council, the moratorium, and how that's being...
What you can do now, if you think we would just wait to send out to roundtable, while people start looking at it and working on it, doesn't that...
Be, because we have 15 days to forth, and...
We're trying to get to 65 days?
No, we have 15 days on receipt to send it out for other board review, isn't that the bylaw, just saying?
There's nothing in the bylaw, or, 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 they have a... We've got 65 days from the time it's been, I think, 15 days.
But what was 15 days?
The planning board shall refer copies of the applicant, the application within 15 days to conservation commission board health, who shall review applications and submit recommendations and comments to the panel in favor of the board to make recommendations within 35 days of the referral. The applicant shall be deemed to be, to be lack of opposition.
I think what they're saying is 15 days prior to the hearing.
And it says it just came in, it's good. Then there's always the question, is that business days?
I think it says 65 days, I think it said business day.
Did you hear this, say, how do I get a response to the business? It's on, on...
So, I don't know, fuck this. Failure of boards to make recommendations within 35 days of the referral of the application shall be deemed to be lack of opposition. So we've got 35 days to set a, a hearing.
Right.
And the hearing can be no later than 65 days from the application, this timestamp. So we've got 35 days to set the, the date, apparently.
No, I'm looking at the, the 35 days to referring to, uh, the board of health, the building inspector, conservation commission. If they don't come back to you within, within 35 days with anything, it seems to me sort of a, no opposition to it. That, that's the amount, you have 35 days to come back, if you don't within that time, there's, there'll be an opposition.
I would guess unless they send, uh, not saying, we have a method, we can't make decisions, I'm here, I'm just talking. I would assume they would have to send us on...
Something that, you know, wait a little time, people, but...
So you have to hold a public hearing within 65 days of the receipt of the application, so that was a board.
So it tells you 65 days of being asked to, uh... January, February.
It's September, October, February.
Yeah, in February.
So, tell you one, please, Thursday, for the, for the, that's your phone.
Yeah.
I think, I think the, I think the question is right.
Yeah, he could say, no, I'm gonna, you can be more efficient, review it and see what the changes are, and then you determine changes to be, uh, no major changes, he may say.
The question was, I believe I saw in the, the worst seven copies received.
And I think Kathy might have already just rewritten them, but I'm not sure.
I doubt that it put me out to somebody, uh, copy the moratorium to the town council, I don't know how in-depth it is as far as, you know, so it just says there will be no more planes, no new personnel, I think it would be a travesty to, uh, say the moratorium is in effect and we can't do this.
What?
B, because we've already approved one, and they're just looking to make not basic revisions, they're looking to make some substantial revisions, but it's already been approved. And we do require, and we do require non-site plan approval, that any revisions must come before the board, no matter if it's a subdivision or a parking lot.
Well, that's what I'm asking, it's just, do they consider this a new application or the, the original application?
Right. And that's something for town council.
For me, they're not putting that whole separate parcel, they're putting it out at that, at the North Port, they're just manipulating what they've got there with some different equipment, so I...
So I don't know.
So, um, just so that I understand, your, your definition of, of new plan as opposed to just shuffling things around would be if they change the orders? Maybe longer this way and shorter that way?
Well,
No, I don't.
I still don't think that would, that would, that means it's a new application. To me, that just says that they're looking for some revisions. And because we've already approved it, we, those revisions that they're proposing, we can deny. If we don't think it's in the best interest of enough, if it's going to cause more detriment to neighbors, we could say, no, that's not going to work. I believe that when they came to us to discuss a revised plan or revised equipment and, uh, less square footage on one parcel, more square footage on another parcel. And I think Jim, you kind of headed this up in saying that it was, we should start again. And, well, not necessarily start again, but we should go through the process. And I consider that to be, that way the neighbors, the abutters, they're always blowing on.
That was the intent, to say, right, let's, let's see what kind of impact this is going to have with the neighbors here about it. But then give us their input on growth.
So we still need to be clear about, you know, at some point in the future, what constitutes a big enough change? And can things, once they're being, they've already been registered, the Hampshire County deeds, that's it, project closed, done. Can something like that be revised? Or is a whole new project?
Well, that was the difference. If, if it's a revised, it's revised.
But can something that's already been filed with the courts and the system and everybody else?
Well, I'm not so sure this gets filed. There's not a deed.
Yeah, it is. There's a copy.
What was that?
Paper, again?
Well, it wasn't a deed change. No, what got filed?
The decision.
Well, the decision gets filed, but they were allowed to do it.
Don't lose this one. This one?
Don't, she said, don't lose it.
And one of them. Um, one of these papers, it's the one that I have.
Well, that's, I don't know, it's going to file if it's a deed change. Right, should be, actually, you know, I don't think that can be reviewed.
It's the most, it's the most.
They, uh, Because I think with that, what Kathy had sent in that letter, I was going to add. Yeah. This is when the original one was electronically recorded, the Hampshire County Registered Deeds. December, uh, document. Recorded dates, January 11th, 2018. So the original plan that we approved is reported in the Hampshire County deeds and has a number and everything else. So that's done. I, I
I get where you're coming, I get where you're coming.
Yeah, only times can people go back to change things and update the Hampshire County deeds now if they have the most recent one.
Because you change the number, so it's set, so they'll say, well, something's been updated.
But I would think, an update to me is when, before the project is going to approve.
Yeah, but the, the only thing that's been recorded is the approval,
Yes.
Not the plans. They don't record solar plans, I bet they, they've registered it, they haven't recorded.
Um, I'm trying to remember, I looked it up online.
I don't know.
And it has this after me on my, and, um,
And, and it's like we had this discussion with subdivisions, they don't get recorded until the end because they change.
Right.
Till the end.
Of the project. And the town.
Yes, so. Well, but with solar panels, they're only into their second year now after they approve. And if.
And they can come back and ask for an extension if they so desire to. Just like we've extended months on?
Yeah. So it's not an ongoing extension.
But they have to request it, certainly. Okay, well, this weekend's up here, we're, we're going to table this until Thursday, is that correct?
Yes.
Until we get some, uh, answers from Town Council, hopefully expeditiously.
That, that, yes, I would, uh,
So you're going to have.
Be the first tomorrow, and ask for the speaker to Town Council in regards to the moratorium, uh, the solar, how does that kind of impact, uh, the changes, uh?
Yes, specifically to this.
Let's see what we have going on, right, Tom?
The only one that is currently approved today. The other one working on us is, is still.
Like I said, to me, this is, you know, this is something that's better, better for the abutters and it works better for the land and stuff like that, I mean, that's, there's definitely something to consider.
Yeah, it's.
That's, we've gone again, we've learned how we can about, right?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
But then again, I think I said.
When, when is the project done? You know, when, when we've done.
Well, it's done, it's done.
It's done when the Town Building Inspector signs off on, uh,
But in the mean, that would be my big question. In the meantime, they keep coming back with changes and changes and changes.
They can, if they.
And drag it on for years.
Well, they do. As long as they don't have to approve, you know, the changes. Yet they have to say yes and no to changes.
It's a lot of unclear stuff.
That's why this is a board.
So we are going to, you're going to, when you're going to ask Chris Martin to have Town Council clarify on the solar law to own, would it impact the changes proposed? So, they'll, they'll see. In the meantime, we're tabling the public hearing later. And until, Thursday, or until after Town? We're not going to meet again, when are we running close to the?
Probably Thursday.
So we'll have to decide at that point, get information from Town Council, and we'll go to them, we don't, but we can still set an date.
Wouldn't it be too much to ask to get the, uh, decision from Town Council and, or?
It's less to ask, and then you can send it back an email.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
So. So you guys.
Seems to be a little different for him.
And then, yeah.
Yeah, and send it down an email, that's good, that's probably right, definitely.
Do you have, as a select board member, direct contact to Town Council? Or does everything go through the, the Town Administration?
It should go through Chris.
Okay. That's what I'm calling.
So he's aware of what's going on.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so the question the Town Council is going to be, was the moratorium effect, uh, changes, uh, approved? Previously approved?
So we're not going to specify to this? It's just any changes?
Well, this, this paper, I'm just, uh, someone that's done through the board and changed.
Okay.
That, you don't find that same writing, or is posted anywhere, or?
It's posted quite a minutes for.
Is that one?
I'm thinking about phones.
That's easier.
They're not posted, are they?
Once you've got Kathy, five.
Easy for Kathy, five.
Sure.
You know, probably even harder. You want, they're not posted, are they?
I have someone in town to read that. More time, I'll see what I can.
So when they said the moratorium, did they say a time? They just said moratorium, or did they say?
So that's, I believe it's a one-year moratorium.
Right now, we're passing ending date of July.
Yes.
With the option going out to October.
It's kind of like, right, exactly, it's kind of like a town. The town is actually, it's a temporary moratorium. That's what the select board recommends, a temporary moratorium. The town has the ability to make it permanent, more important, certain amount of that.
So in order to change the bylaw, during this moratorium, this temporary moratorium, there has to be a public hearing. But if they're going to a town for.
If we may, if we may have changed the bylaws that are, as we, uh, affects solar, yes.
So what was the, so what was the urgency to put a moratorium on this? What was the detriment to the town? Rather than just hold the hearing and then, and then go to town meeting, see what the board, what was the urgency about stopping what that was going on?
You want to speak on that? No, I just know you and a lot of conversations with, with, regardless of.
There seems to be, uh, I'm trying to say, for your influx of developers coming this way from the East, from East Park, it's good because they're all new stuff, there's all this stuff. There's a lot of open, and not a lot of wood that's out there. And they want to get that done before, and it's a bit strict for solar. Like, Dutchland had something like nine. And now they're trying to work on a bylaw, like, it can't be on consecutive lots. And it can't be any bigger than this and that. Even the state, I think it's the state of the federal, the state said that there's the maximum aid they're going to allow is five in the laws. This one's not going to make it once it gets up there. The, uh, industry one, it's too big. But they don't go to the state until we're done with our decision.
I think it would be most unofficial for the board members to watch the select board meeting.
Oh, they don't think that.
Yeah, it was up yesterday.
The latest.
Uh, yes, most current.
On the.
Well, I did ask for Jane Joyce, who is the chair for the management committee, if you could come and speak in front of the board, unless, and the board had questions for her. Though I'm concerned that Jane, I was at, as him and I both being part of the select board, they can say, we'll discuss on the same thing. So he had, he had reported questions to the attorney general and decided that would be okay. I'm completely spurred back. I'd asked Jay if he would follow up on Town Council. Actually, I'd asked Chris Martin to follow up on Town Council. Because the base field tells you yes and no at that point, and we're full, because him gives us the opportunity to ask questions and he can refer us to information.
The simple way around that whole thing is to have a joint planning board select board meeting.
We can do that.
You know, if that's the hitch.
Yeah, I'm hoping that Chris had found out by, uh, Town Council. You know, that comes in a place that, you know. I, I don't see a problem with them getting on that. I'm not that person.
Well, Jane's being cautious, absolutely.
So, we'll still wait for Thursday and then we'll issue this.
So Thursday, uh, we still have the 15 days, um, the application? We still?
Taking it out to the other board?
It's taken out on December 4th, on those.
The board is still taking it on December 4th.
So we have the 15 days to send that application to the board.
Well, it still gets us to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think Kathy was.
They have that time. The board have that time to review and then 35 days to get back.
Let's move on.
Yeah, so we're not, not going to do that.
That horse has been beaten enough to.
Still don't get that.
Can I give you notes, Kathy, just now, the administration, uh, the, um, board's secretary? No lights.
No lights.
No lights anywhere. And, uh, the lights.
Hold on, I'm wondering if anybody, I think you have that's what I mentioned.
What about?
Not most, some.
We are doing that.
Did they go down?
Yeah.
No lights.
No.
We can space, space.
There is nothing.
Cups of water. We can space? Yeah.
Oh, mine, mine, my cup.
There's just a whole cup, I, I read it, I haven't saw the cup.
Um, you, what you probably saw.
Oh, I only have the seven pages.
With the, uh.
You emailed us.
Yeah. Yeah, Kathy wondered, actually, he sent it out.
Okay.
It's, it's too big, and I, actually, he has a magic way of making it, so I tried to send it out. And it's too big. So even cutting out the maps and everything else, it was too big.
Will we move through the whole thing, or will we move through the abbreviated version?
Um.
What you sent us, with the changes that we had made.
I think we just need to go through, um,
This is all for the, the, the.
Go through our changes. And, um, Did you get that, um? There you go, yeah, yeah, I think I printed it on the bottom. And you got the sheet that says our changes? It said, ready, hi. Want to show me?
Yeah, sure. Um, I'm going to ask Kathy for future reference, for future draw, or, uh, to print out something. Anything that's coming out of the mail, we serve, print out a hard copy, see it. Is that our responsibility to, to print it out, and print it for stuff like that? I think Kathy's doing this for us right now.
Jim. I'm not sure about that one. No, it's, I, I have looked at that, but I
Well, you can.
I didn't see anything that.
Yeah, I looked at it, and I didn't see.
Those, those we made.
These are the ones that we did, and now in such a, in, uh, it's, you know. Everyone starts with zoning.
Yeah.
So this is what we've changed, right here. You have your.
I have a line, yeah.
Everything there, I just picked it up. And changes that we, so, in there. So generally, the zoning, zoning. Um, these are changes we made at the end of the term, at the end of, uh, updating lines in this chapter, but, uh, all those changes are in there. The people that have, you know, the others, because your plans were mentioned. We've changed anything else, and we're going to change anything on the, on section nine of bylaw action. There's nothing in all of those spaces, in case they need to.
Sure does. Sure does.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have some emergency checks over there.
No, it's, I didn't, yes, Tony.
So, yes, so we... Okay, yeah, we have very copy there. Okay, so our first change is on page thirty-one, turn two, we're moving on. Thirty-one. Here's what we just... Okay, so we did, uh, uh, Grand University has six building visitors, which means that, because we said five. And then, um, they had general business two, which was general business district two. We took that out, because that's another one. And we added, um, industrial district two, landfill recycling solid waste, and village center district. And then the overlay districts, um, they had some of the initials, they do quite much sense. And so we just changed it to just the titles. So there's agricultural preservation, flood plain district, water supply protection district, mixed use district, business park overlay district, and professional office overlay district. And then, under three paragraphs under there, the village, the VC district allows mostly single and multifamily housing, regular lot sizes of minimum of four thousand square feet with a road frontage of one hundred and fifty feet. Next page. We took out the paragraph, the municipal district comprises uh, four percent of the town, twenty percent of the town, and we expect buildings totally municipal and industrial, which is minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet and frontage is one hundred fifty. We took that off and gone. As long as that is within. Uh, next paragraph is okay, we took out the next paragraphs that, uh, said that Grandy had three, has had three approved subdivisions in recent years. And one for the senior, so instead we have, and the planning board held a public forum on October nineteen, two thousand sixteen, to solicit input from Grandy citizens to the land use chapter of the master plan. Topics discussed development, looks good, any needs, and existing resources, opportunities, and constraints for future development, what they see as future of the community vision and plan, and potential land use development projects. In March twenty seventeen, the planning board updated chapter ten, land use chapter of the Grandy master plan to include it for the year until nineteen twenty sixteen public call. And that is the only changes we made. If you get that, you're not sure the page just is on, the five year action plan, it was on seventy-one. Section nine has the table, and we didn't change anything at all material. But the planning board has mentioned the entire largest approved information. One line letter, this one.
I don't know that we have to make a motion to approve this, because it's a motion, I think it's a motion that we have previously made to send this off to the open space, so we're just verifying as we're changed. Correct.
Yeah, and all they were asking for is the, um, letter of response from the planning board saying, do you agree or not?
We're just in front of the table, right?
Right.
So, um, my letter, and my, it, it probably, or it's just a wonderful sentence about the planning board approval, so twenty eighteen.
Sign it while you're waiting.
I will drop it off at the earlier morning. Okay, so is that a favor, if you don't need to do any more? Details? So we don't need a motion, so that's fine. Getting the line of that tone. Okay. Um, can we skip to the... Just an update on the permitting guide, um, Kathy, let's see, Betty? Jettie, Betsy, from PBPC, that made up the permitting guide. Um, made just about all of the changes that we had asked for. And, um, she sent that document, changes to Kathy Leonard, so Kathy could send it on, uh, the note to all the departments of, I've never looked at her, um, portions and respond back. No responses.
Well, they only paid the head guy.
I remember that two weeks ago, she had a change of...
Well, she sent it out.
Kathy giving a date to respond back?
Uh, I had asked for, this is what it is right now, was, but I went through it, there's still some, um, still some changes that were made, left here. We had left a lot of spaces where, um, when we said, you know, we would, um, check on that, and that sort of thing, and everything. Especially on page nine, I think it's the single family dwellings on the chart. Contact higher for everything's about, do you need to install a well land or septic system? And then he started talking about district one and two, and it's not deadly, the waterfall. And...
Page nine?
Page nine, you got that chart right on? Give me that.
No, I'm not, why page nine, especially for us?
It's a single family dwellings. Next page.
Hello, go back and special terms, I had all the time, but it's a bad one.
So, uh, that wasn't done.
Oh, here it is.
Just contacts off the other larger district, I think.
You gotta do that.
Okay, I missed that. Done.
That was ours.
No, this was the one, this is the one. This is David, November twentieth, that's David, November third. And applying for various pages, I don't know.
And you were watching, yes. Do you know that draft, since you've double checked it?
They're both drafts.
Well...
Yeah, this, yeah.
First, in November thirty, this page twelve, we were being expressed.
Okay, so it's, it's a page off. Um, there was a, an original underfiling for appeal on the bottom, on the left side. Uh, there was, if the applicant, an upper town or above, believes the planning board is only enforcement officer, the building inspector here, who has misinterpreted this only by law, denying the, I understand that, she was supposed to check to see if it, uh, it can be basically anybody and not just the applicant. So she put, she has to hear, but I don't know if that's quite right.
Well, we were saying that anybody could actually appeal, if that wasn't not correct, right?
Correct, but the way she explained it here...
That's not, that's not correct, it's not correct.
What, the new, the revised one is not correct?
The revised one is correct. It's basically saying anybody.
Right, it's not only for us, yeah. Or any person who's been actually working, or on any of, but it's, they're not approved. So, I have to, I'm pretty sure it has to be in the bill.
Okay.
Well, this may be what she found out with National Law, too. This sounds more like legalese, the way it's written. At least.
Yeah, but, um, not in the other town, we're, okay. This grant we have. Now, two pages along, we have the common permits and licenses. Starts with a paper. She was kind of all over the board as to what she had residential, her titles did not match our, um, our table, schedule, these tables, so she matched them. And I went through one by one. And yes, they didn't match, and took out, do you want to go through the, um, the changes we asked? The sense, that's as, further than six foot. She had building department, so we changed it to the planning board. And special permit fences on front, probably, I don't know where she got, that's probably from the bylaws, so that would not be there. Okay, and then there's a whole, so I have to flip around on the changes. Detached private garage or stables. It's here, sorry. Okay, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth one done, and a new one. And we're detached, we added that, because that would actually... And then removal of soil and lawn, the green, which is on the next page. We're gonna change it to select board. Special permit soil board. And two signs. She had planning board and board selectmen, so we locked up the board selectmen and put, uh, the planning board of the building. And, uh, yeah, that one's in. Trenches. The building market, we asked her, the building department, she had the first one, and we asked her to check. So I believe she checked, building department, yeah, I know where you're going. Then, uh, woodstoves, we see that on the far right column.
They'll do a check of the wood department.
So I missed that.
Yeah.
So that one, I couldn't check on that, easy enough.
Oh, I mean, that's good, yeah.
Go check on that.
And on those, uh, she sent everything, the, this, this version of everything to myself with Kathy. So she's kind of done with it, but they had to have their part done by December, going to the grant we got.
Well, do you have board of health on that, or woodstoves and wood quarters?
Um, well, it's for, for whomever issues the permit.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I put it down board of health, and we're gonna add that, and that, under the issued bracket.
So, he starts by reporting.
Yeah, I know, we discussed, I had to put it down board of health and online.
Okay.
I think the board of health does have something to do with the outdoor wood boarders.
That's the conversation we had before, too. It was outside.
I think they created a bylaw, those are the boarders. Building inspector now forces it. I think that's very well due, I think that's what happened. But I know, when the wood boarder phase got going, a lot of boards of health were involved with, you know, smoke and height of chimney, so many, uh, has to be so many little feet away from, stuff has to be so... Well, we need to hear from other boards, too.
Yes, we are. So, do you want, do you want me to keep going on the little nitty things, or just, uh?
Sure.
Okay, sure, no mind, let's find open space community. Yep, there's the beginning to chart. Right about perpilation, that's... Uh, under issued by, she had planning board and board of health, we changed it to just board of health.
Oh, right above, page perpilation, that's, page fourteen, second line up from the bottom.
Are we going backwards?
Yeah. See, she had the other categories, but underneath, she changed them over to our, to match our bylaws. It's got shifted. Open space, okay, rest hall, convalescent, and nursing home.
That's on page fifteen, third down and top.
Planning board, she had, uh, planning board, board of health, oh, no, no, not that. Planning board, but I had, uh, hm, two and a half, I had over to the side, special permit, planning board, zoning restrictions. So that makes we had it. Okay. Subdivisions. Residential, no move streets, it's the same page. Down a couple more. And, uh, the most numerous streets. She had planning board, board of health, and highway department, we willed it down to the planning board. I take it, comments over there. Is that? I thought that was rain, I think it's, I think you're right there. No rain, okay, so that changed, subdivision residential, no move streets. Changed that to just the planning board, she had planning board, board of health, and highway.
But what is that in the name of approval, you tell me? If it's on an existing street? Normal streets, how do they do that for normal streets? No, it's not, it's not.
Site, no, 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 it's there.
That's my answer, sure. Maybe we'll test it, it's a special. Well, sure, it's same, it's same, site plan.
Planning board special, or site plan, special permit, plant, uh, planning board, site plan. It's just a, uh...
Don't worry, I, I don't even know what it's in.
We can show it somewhere, capital, anyways. I don't see the, 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 the subdivision, the subdivision. Is it there yet?
No, it's not established at the time, it's just, no, I don't like this.
So, we're not, that off those two, off entirely?
Not all of them, just the normal streets, right? Just the one we did, just in streets, normal streets.
The one with no streets? Get that off.
What we witnessed before with Painter Valley, when they're working with two or three towns and things are almost the same, they get some overlap from one town to the next. You know, it doesn't take an hour. At least this time when I was in town with Lonzo. Never we, we saw that.
Okay. And then, we're going to change it to, to this. Fences. Fences is on the first page of the chart. She had the building department, we changed it to the planning board. Okay. Detached private garage or stables, which is on that same page. It seemed to him it's worth, she, we add, she didn't have them when detached on it, but that's where our bylaws. It's our question. Removal or soil, or?
Yeah, we already did that, soil, or?
I digress. Commercial golf courses should be under agricultural. Oops. Yep, top of that, page sixteen. She did not have the work to work. So we added it.
So that's a golf course, you're not rolling?
Okay, that's.
Need to make. Rented out.
Rented out.
And what's the, commercial golf course?
She just said golf courses.
Well, what I'm wondering is, is what if, uh, granted, we want to be, we want to do the same thing that South Avenue did? I mean, is that what you call to be missing a golf course with the ledgers? Or you might have seen.
And quite frankly, I don't know what that falls on, because of the private golf course.
Which one?
Commercial golf course.
Let's see, it was agricultural.
Still is. Has not moved. For each point, sixteen, top of sixteen.
Yeah, and on our schedule, table one, scheduled use regulations, we put commercial golf course, special permit, site plan approval, planning board, in residential and, or, yeah, that's in our, residential, mixed unit. Multi-unit. Okay, we all set it down? Will we run along, or do you want to still consider?
I don't know what, I don't know what a commercial golf course, may exist, a golf course.
Do we add that?
Yeah, we do have to change.
So leave it there. So leave us all follows our current bylaws. We don't really know. Actually, down the road, institutional, they're a private membership club. It's not issued before private golf course, that comes out.
I don't know what that means.
It's, 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 I don't think it carries over private membership club, and on purpose, not a gainful business. So.
So does the Legion operate as a gainful business, or as a private institutional club?
It's not a profit.
It is not.
The Legion belongs to separate business, it exists as a, it's actually a lot of the site that's.
So we have two entities in one building?
Yes.
Institution, institution.
Got other sources, Russian?
Um, uh, go back to that one. Private membership club. Private's for private? Yeah, okay, so she put what we have in the title, she split it up. We have private membership club, not conducted as gainful business. So we're a, an entity that has.
My, my other question is, what is responsible for, what do we, and we can't declare what we consider a private membership club, but where the acting authority might have. What, what, what is, it's a private membership club?
Based on that description?
That's what it first says.
It's a, not, it's a gainful business. So that's a non-profit.
Uh, commercial recreational camping for transient guests. Is right down on the commercial golf course, page sixteen. We added the word commercial to match our. Okay, and then, research or development laboratory. That is wholesale, seven, seventeen. Changes. She had planning board, board of health, we took out board of health. And she has radioactive waste facility, highlight. Maybe somebody else has it.
I'm probably, make sure you're right.
That's right. And I'm pretty sure, yeah, radioactive waste facility, that's one that I think the state had a, 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 according to section nine, National Law forty-eight, section nine, or five. Good, found you right along. Under business. Under business, delivery, yes, to the last, on page eighteen, top of the page. She had board of selecting, we changed it to select board. Home shop, it's under accessory uses. Page fifteen, home shop. She had zoning board, fields, and highway department. Plan, we changed it to zoning board, fields, and planning board. And sale and use, sale of used motor vehicles. Motor vehicles, it's under retail and services. It, yeah. It is. So sale of used. That's on page seventeen. Most of the end, that's accessory mode.
Right.
Page seventeen.
Middle of the page.
It's under retail store.
Still, still used motor vehicle. I don't know, do you want to add a new, or something?
I see. Sale of used motor vehicles. Permit, select board.
There was a, there was a.
It wasn't more than a stop.
Shouldn't, because they, they give the license, we can recite that.
Right, so it says select board, it said planning board to begin with, we changed it to select board. Because Lynn said we could.
Right, so I think Jim's saying it's for a permit, not a license.
Right.
Well, I had new also there.
Under?
Yeah, so, new, was it? Okay, maybe we should write it.
Well, haven't checked it.
No, maybe you talked about, so you did talk about, I don't know, talk about new vehicles as well. Yeah, I don't know if I can comment on those. Put the license, that's what. Residential is per, it's permit, license. And then when we drop, like, uh, permit, license. Accessory uses is just permit, and it's going to retail, retail services.
Yeah, it just says used, it doesn't say anything about new.
New order, it's still has to have a license from the store.
Right, now, sale of used motor vehicles on our table, says, special permit by the planning board, and it's restricted to general business, industrial one and industrial two.
That's right, that represents permit, but for licensing, it's, it's.
Right. And we say another one, new, it's all, it's used.
We, uh, for notes, under sale of used motor vehicles, also has zoning restrictions, but it should say special permit, planning board.
Which one do you want?
Sale of used motor vehicles, didn't you just read in the order?
Yes, she has zoning restrictions, so you go to the table and see where your restrictions are. Yes, it says in the table, uh, not special permit, planning board, yes.
So nowhere, that's going back to what Rob was talking about, nowhere was talking about a new vehicle.
Right. Not in a tart.
So I want to open up a new car dealership.
You come and talk to us. Site plan approval, special permit.
I'm looking for the site plan approval as well, it's a, it's a two, it's a, guy. That's a guy, but it's two things they have to go for. One would be, they have, they have to kind of draw a conjunction of them, because the, the, the select board issues the permit for how many vehicles they can sell. They don't issue a permit for how many vehicles they can sell until they have a site plan, who will know how many vehicles are sighted. Or, we ran into that down at, uh, Albaire, AJ was trying, they were trying to do something down there. They asked for a permit from the select board for X amount of cars. The select board said, we'd like to see the site hand approval, so that we know how many cars you can house there. So that's why, kind of like, uh, accessory building over twelve hundred square feet, it's like a front end between, or a rear end between, easy vehicles and small vehicles.
So, going back to what Jim was talking about, exactly what I wanted to, I think where it says sale of used motor vehicles, it should be, uh, retail and services, it should be.
Which is it?
Planning board, and on the licensing, that's what actually show up for select board.
I'm going to future say, say, sale of motor vehicles, you do that.
So we've got to change it on here.
On our own, I don't know.
On which you can.
No, we can't, we can't.
Well, we can make it, include it in our changes.
In the, two there twice for these.
In here twice?
And, uh, in the, the.
Sale of used motor vehicles.
Some of the bylaws have twice for that, so, there's a new, we use, uh, fit, because there's a different permit, there's a different licensing process. I believe I heard that on the, on the.
There's something in the zoning file?
I understand all this here that, that has a different planning board, planning board, is talking about, uh, site plan approval. So the actual business would be a site for, for sale of used motor vehicle, vehicles, would have to have a site plan approval. As far as the permit, it's, the planning board is the permitting authority, where the select board is the licensing authority. So that's something, where, what's set up in this guide, I would think it should just be planning board. There now, we're referring to site plan approval.
So, Jim, you, are you saying? That, um, something about, there's something about new car sales?
I'll just leave it there, whoever's there.
Well, you see right above there, auto sales, motorcycle sales, used car sales only, or incidental to new car sales. That's, that's not, our official basis. Auto sales, motorcycle sales. Used car sales only, or incidental to new car sales.
You're an incident?
None of them have a new car dealership, they can sell used cars, that would be a second law. And that's probably why we had it as a used car dealership, so that makes sense. So this was the law.
That's, that's the table, I was trying to find those, sorry. See, that's what was, you're, you're working on that, that was nice one, oh, this was with reference.
Yeah. That's where we start following the bylaws. So are you looking, we should also, you want to go to the ready boards and departments, that's every table. And, um, I had just asked for her to put a space between the office contact and the parallel above, as it was given to us. So she did, and lost. And so she, where?
Now, planning board, the contact is on sex, not sharing.
Right, because it was Rob's father. You go, bold it right to the top, or anything happened.
Where, page twenty, where everything else is not. The conservation permission, uh...
But what is each department does?
Right, but Kathy Leonard is listed for conservation commission. I'm wondering, I'm wondering, the contact shouldn't Kathy Leonard for planning board. Historic district commission, Kathy Leonard's the contact.
Yeah, because they didn't know who else did it, Kathy said Kathy. We could change it to Kathy.
I don't know, it's just be Kathy's title.
We need to, now we have to talk to her.
Well, Kathy's title is, so Kathy's not there next year. If Kathy's not there six months from now, this is still.
I see what you're saying. Yep.
It's the, the fact that the.
In other words, contact, contact no name, four seven seven one seven seven.
But it could be, uh.
Yeah, I like it.
Whatever, whatever, Tom, you just said, Tom, contact Tom administrator.
Yeah, I mean, we could take all of the names off of all of them and just leave the phone number.
I think that's why, is that when somebody jut does. Or somebody new comes in, we're not trying to change the website and everything else.
It says contact, John Mitchell, who can fire you, who decided to fire you. Highway Department, Highway Department.
Um, so backing up to the beginning of that section, assessor's office, you would pick out Nicole Menard and my assessor's clerk.
Well, again, again. They're reviewing this, what they don't work on, there's, out there's, we need to wait a little.
Okay. Ledge is trying to be consistent on.
I didn't just be, I didn't just be consistent.
Well, I think we should too, we should, we set it out there for each department. We're on the run important. So what do we want to do for planning board then? Just what we said, or what I said, I think. County administrator, I can include the number.
So that's where, county administrator or?
Assistant.
And what, and what's for district. So you'll find out that's all.
That is.
We should, you can make that recommendation to the boroughs.
Do I think that's our number?
No. Aren't we supposed to have some kind of a cabinet, I don't think, but this whole thing?
This order is two.
Okay, the whole is talking to me.
So that's where we are with the permitting.
Interesting. You might, on our behalf, I want.
This is great. It's all great, all the information is correct.
Still great. It's all practically awesome.
We strive for awesome.
Pretty soon we could. It's been all right. Close enough, okay. Good enough for a good score or anything. What else?
Okay, uh, this is. This way. Miles. I hope you all have your little sheets like this.
If we don't, then what?
No, you are forced to stay here. That's.
From last week?
Yeah.
What was the title of?
Section two zoning.
Yeah. Section two zoning.
Yeah.
I'm gonna find, I didn't want to add it.
One and pass it along, let's move on to. We'll ask this, uh, passing the whole along. Jim, you had asked at the last meeting, when we were going through this document here. Uh, the Village Center did not have some yeses all the way through. And that was new. At two thousand fourteen was when all of the categories were changed, and Village Center everything. Wow, things like that. But it didn't, nothing flowed. So you wanted to know what was done the last time. Hence, the moment, this is what was approved at March tenth, two thousand fourteen meeting. Highlighted the pieces there, because that's all you got in the past.
This is the stuff that was.
Well, Kathy Leonard.
Well, they need this one out.
I'll find you that one.
Okay, you're ready.
Okay, so. Okay, everybody here, we're starting?
Who's that?
We'll start from the beginning.
Take those as well.
I'm gonna start with section three point five, H two. Now, the purple means I'm totally confused. If you try and make sense out of all those, they're duplicates and they could be worded clearly. And for instance, the last. Little bit highlighted in purple. Just saying, about the ZBA, that goes one, two, three, four lines up.
And I think here. Should say what SPA is. It should say what, uh, you know, B, PV SPA is. Or just, right, I don't think we need the. People will take, you know, if you know, I think SP stands for, and ZBA stands for, we need to put those together. It's supposed to do that. So I have all these different.
I was about to add that one last. SP. Should we add this one?
Yeah, see, it doesn't explain. It doesn't explain, like you say, somebody comes in, new looks at this and says. Nice word, but what do they mean?
So SP should just say new special. PB should be planning board.
Right, so yes and no, okay, yes permitted, no used, perfect. So those are pretty clear.
SPA should just have site plan approval.
What, what do you say, are we wedging for that?
Yes.
I think, yeah, so. But they're all put together, it should just mean busy all that thing.
Should be SP, special permit.
Right. PB, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, okay, SPA is second. So this will be. Won't stop talking until you finish it. Kind of like definitions on the page before that, cover the. So. Yeah.
I agree. Do you feel any different?
Uh, PB, so we put, uh, so we'll only end up with one, two, three, four. Plus it's seven lines, so. So I'll have. Yes and no. And then. PB, planning board, ZBA, planning board of vehicles, and then SP, special permit, and SPA, site plan approval.
Yeah, we have all the, all the select.
Oh, and then select.
Select.
Same as SP, but thanks to.
Okay, so that's how we finish that, wonderful, moving on to the table itself. Now, um, this, this was the stuff that was last put in, I, I was the question which we were looking for, so. This, what's attached to this particular document is, uh. Is what was done in March tenth, two thousand fourteen. Which was on. This started the, uh. Table. Without the. Without the bylaws. So I've gone in and put byline numbers in. That made more sense to me than some of the others.
They were sure going to fade out. That's right.
And the special thing is that ZBA references a byline number to this and it doesn't quite match the. Chart. So, um, on the first page. Of the chart. Uh, the red is what I've added in. Okay, good.
The ones that you've got, uh, VC, highlighted in red?
Yes, it was empty before. It was, it was on, on the one, that one over there. When you go to left hand, uh, you can see the first. One, two, three, four lines will not be, don't have anything in there.
And which, this is the one that went to the town?
Yes.
On, on. Three, ten, fourteen.
Correct.
And it's still. Open.
Right.
And you're proposing putting yeses there?
Correct.
You can't do that. Because that's not what the town board for, for VC. And that would forest reharvesting would not be, would not be allowed.
So have you stood on those?
Or should we have those?
Okay. We can do that.
Well, no, you can't put all of it.
Well, right.
You can't put up again.
This is where it was asked. What did Tom Clark record? And they, and they recorded nothing, which is not, well, but the question was, do we, do we know that that is what? Well, we were, we were trying to backtrack to when Larry was doing this, if there were omissions. That I would consider a typo. Because forest reharvesting, tree, tree farm nursery would not be allowed in.
Village center.
Village center. Greenhouses, commercial greenhouses, livestock dairy poultry, none of that would be allowed in that.
Agriculture, or, or, bit of culture. So, hold on.
But it goes back to what Jim just said, it wasn't approved at the town meeting. It was approved at the town meeting as, as planned. You can't go back and put that in.
Wait a minute, why not?
I'm saying we can.
He's saying you can, it's all mine.
That was not, that was not allowed, these were not allowed, these are titles. It was never filled in correctly. These were never.
That's what we're assuming. This is what was approved.
Jim?
I'm just saying, if this is what, this is what came out, this was what was approved.
No, this isn't the document that was.
Oh, well, it's not.
This is not the document that was approved.
What's the document that was approved?
That's what Kathy gave you, that's, that's not the article.
Well, I guess the, what's on the website, the county website.
No, I want to see the, the articles that were approved. And that approved.
Okay.
From the town clerk. From the town clerk that was, that would, the, uh. The articles that were approved. That went to, to turn down. And these were not.
Cause she, yeah, cause she sent me. This. And, um, all of the documents, I have all of those documents, I just didn't bring them. So, are we going to put ends in there? Then we can check on.
Uh, let's go to check on. Certainly, it would make sense that there were that ends there. Again, it's.
You can't be sure, there was other items in there.
What, um. I can see.
And if you, and if you look through the whole village card. There's not much of that, I suppose, special permit. Every other, every other box is filled in. Except for the first section.
Now, I think if you go back to, now that they've said. So some extent, they were putting stuff in right here. But they didn't think that was approved by the town meeting, right?
Some of this wasn't changed. VC was an added addition.
Okay.
So some of these.
It's actually sort of anonymous, lost.
So if you go back to, what, what are you referring to?
What I was scaling around is all. A little font.
Under retail and services, we still have cake.
You have chapter.
Yeah. And are you. It's near, yeah, it's near the end of retail and services.
So, time fifteen. Orange scale bracket, solar photovoltaic installations. All of here. Residential says yes. They'll put in SP, PB and SPA.
Yeah. Because. Residential's right now, the pendle, the pendle's still a cloud, isn't it?
Okay, so, so you're, you're putting that in and we can do that, provided we go back to. Uh, three point five two, although that supersedes the chart.
Um, I don't know if these numbers were the same. I'd ask Chris Martin about the number, because the way that they were numbered before, they're just going to, uh. We're running on others. And he said, I'm gonna move on.
It's the worst. I don't see any. Three point three. So why don't we just leave it as it was, as a yes? Because under, in talking about the large ground market standards and conditions, we say that it is a special permit, zoning board, second approval.
But if you're gonna be consistent throughout the table, I'll have to guess. We.
No, you're right, no, I, I agree with you on that, I can stay, I can stay.
See, where, where someone just had a plain yes, I'm asking, yes, please.
S P, P V, S P A. So, so that is correct.
The solar?
That is correct.
Uh, so. How it says on top of zone district, yes and no, they weren't saying S P, why are they?
Why, it was allowed. Yet there is, there is.
Well, you don't need to put a why there if, if, if this is there.
Right. The plain why's don't need at least special permit. Makes sense?
So that's fine, I can stay that, or it cannot stay that.
You're found in that, cause of wrinkles.
I know. By wrinkles.
What about the one, one of those? I wonder about the one above it. Outdoor display of goods and mirrors. Not about anywhere? What about, what the heck do you think I've been saying for a year and a half?
Well, at the one law location? Not allowed.
That was never changed, that was never changed. It's got that one since.
Um, this is not even on that. Okay, we can go by bylaw. Three point six point six.
That's the landfill.
The landfill. Um, I guess there, what I said, I was saying it should be.
S P, P V, S P A.
What, he's talking.
Whatever. Planning board is special.
Special permit, site plan approval, planning board, I just said site plan approval.
So you're saying they got a why, a why from the P V, S P A?
Right.
But that would make it consistent, really.
But where, where, where else does it, where does it say that?
Where does it say?
Two points.
Three point six point six, over on the left.
Yeah, I got that. But where does it say in residential, residential one, two?
Industrial one, two.
Just go left, it's the same thing here, where does it say this?
It says right here.
But this one doesn't. I guess we'd have to follow whatever the state, local, federal regulations. There's one of the state regulations that should need to be, I don't know, approved.
Okay, set.
Senator Landfill, solid waste management.
And this goes to three point six.
You won't, you don't want to have any further description for bylaw.
That's all right.
You won't have any further description, I think we have to, of all of these.
I'm just saying that's all it says.
Yeah, in the, in the files, that's it. We're not.
Then, then we can't change that. We can make a recommendation to change that.
Right, and that's what this is. This is what we would bring in as a recommendation of changes, given the date. Does that work? Does it change it?
So it's all recommendations, that's all it says.
Yes, this would be what we would go in, one of the, one of the articles. What we were, what we're doing is adding the bylaw column. Bylaw record column. And then we're correcting things that were left off. All that more clearly. Like the yes, it's fine, that's already there, but, um.
We have to change the, to the bylaw.
Well, there's no, this, this is the bylaw.
There is no bylaw.
The pointy tiny thing is the bylaw.
There is no three point six.
There's not three point, number six bylaw. Goes up to three point three, I think, and jumps up to four.
And goes to four?
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, it was going to screw it up, that one, and we added this new, uh.
So, so, so a lot of investigation to, because it's, uh, it's this.
So site plan approval? Any more?
Well, something along those lines. I think, I think that should be, um, site plan approval. It should be planning board, site plan, special permit, site plan approval, and selective.
Or an open mountain.
And we do.
Well, if a site plan is submitted to the planning board, and as we discussed earlier, then the site plan gets submitted to all the concerned boards for their review under the special comment. Under the special, right, something. So the proposal would be those, those two.
So special permit slash site plan approval, planning board and selective.
I think the selective should be all of them. And here we're gonna ask for a modification, it's not leaving, correct?
Yes. Um, the next one, three point six seven. You asked for that one.
No, 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 tell us, three point six, three point six eight.
There you go, done by, last one. Research and development.
I see that, I'm sorry. So I'm questioning why you're three point six, and three point six seven.
Okay, cause this.
That's the class intrusion.
I don't.
Okay.
So, that's just, so you know that. So my, um, S P A is there, but didn't, didn't say who.
There's only, there's only one person, there's only one group at this site now.
But nobody knows that, they just pick this up and say, okay, here's the chart. If you just have an S P A, they're gonna have to ask questions, where do I go?
I don't know where you're, what you mean. S P A, P V.
Cause it doesn't say anywhere, in the bylaws, anywhere.
Okay, so, here's, here's what you're doing with the law.
Yeah.
It's getting us all confused. You, you, one minute you're saying it'd be, it's there, and purple, right?
That's what I'm questioning.
And this, and this says S P A, right?
Correct, that's what it says currently.
So, you're proposing.
S P A, planning board.
Planning board. S P A.
And the no is, is under industrial two. You, uh, industrial two is limited landfill solid waste management and recycling. So, that no is there, I was just questioning that. Sure hit it. Well, we're on the head.
Well, that one should be, that should be a yes.
And then the other industrial? But that?
But if that's what it says, we'll have to find out if that is what the town said. No, that's what she is saying, they're saying no. And I'm proposing it should say yes, in, in, in industrial two. We can't just change it, but that's a notation, and if we agree to, we'll bring it to a view in, in the town meeting.
Yeah, and industrial two is the limited landfill solid waste management and recycling. So does research and development laboratory fit in there?
No, is, is that what they think industrial two, they lose all that specifically just for the landfill? And that's just, and, and that's just standard, is. Why would you question that?
Because you're allowed in one industrial scenario.
And that's what you're allowed.
And scenario, okay. Okay, three point six point eight. Manufacturing, processing, fabrication, assembly.
Research or development laboratory. Research and development laboratory. Three point six two, three point six seven.
Research or.
So you have research laboratory or development laboratory, you can't have a combined one.
Right, in the, um, it's only allowed in industrial section.
Well, it's on the system first. Based on what the land is, basically, research or, research or development laboratory. And underneath in the three point six point seven, research and development laboratory.
But it says specifically for use is consistent in definition of renewable or alternative.
It is confusing, because, because three point six, three point six point two allows it in industrial and industrial two.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's the same.
So are you saying not allowed in industrial? This is consistent of definitely renewable or alternative energy. And the next page has a.
I would actually, I'm losing this part.
And the next page continues that, three point six point manufacturing for use consistent with definition of renewable or alternative energy. So site plan approval, and I'm just saying, add P V, eternal.
That was a, that, that is a, um, use?
Yes, probably the state came up with that.
Well, that was part of becoming a great community, we added that in. And we put it into the question, the question as well.
And, and we're gonna keep there on industrial two.
Three point seven, that's in there, you're saying you should put.
Three point six eight is, um, says no in industrial two, so we're only gonna, that's it. And on industrial, it's got site plan approval. And then add planning board. I think anywhere where we have special permit, site plan approval, we should clarify from desert.
And, and we don't need to take that to town meetings.
Trying to clarify the, the home management.
So I thought, it's, it's a given, there's only one. One more can do that for S P A.
So three point seven point oh, home occupation. Special permit.
Mar, and Judea, special permit, insect plan approval. And I don't know why that was not, because it should, special, uh, V C. Yeah. That can change.
But who can go? When I can, I can take it as a proposal, change it.
Why would we propose to change it?
Absolutely.
So, for the home occupation, it says special permit.
You want to change, we're gonna propose to change to special permit slash planning board dash special.
Site.
Site, site plan approval, as, as it is in the R and in the Judea.
Okay, um, just so it's clearer in mind here, I would, S P slash planning board, then dash S P A, who?
S P A two, it should, it should be S P, S P slash S P A.
Then, yeah. So that looks to be a change for all of them.
It should be that. Is that all that's really? Yeah?
I think that would be right. It's saying special permit slash needs to be planning board, site plan approval.
What the site plan approval is, is spelled out on the, uh, in three point zero.
Doing that.
Yeah, but maybe that's why it was done that way. That's, that's made some definitions, useful definitions.
That we were wanting to change.
Right, what you can, what I'm saying is, in the definitions, you can, what S P, does S P stand for? Site plan, what S P A, site plan approval, S P stands for special permit, P V stands for planning board, so if you put those together, the special permit, planning board, site plan approval.
Right, so I would, because we only have limited space, I was saying, we retired before, special permit slash S P A. And then I just put the name, but, dash P V.
Let's see what, see what it is, but it's not, yeah, really simple. Use of, of special permit from planning board, recycling.
But I thought we were saying before, we're not gonna have S P, T V, S P A, we're just gonna take it out, we would have S P by itself, P V by itself, S P A by itself. Whereas the, S P A is already by itself, so just put, um, S P.
Special permit. This is, go to page eleven.
Under?
This is where this is going, this stuff.
Under bylaws.
Use regulations. Fourth one down. We'll, we'll start with the, the second one now, S P, P V, S P A. Use allowed by special permit from planning board with site plan approval. Then you go, then you go down to S P, Z B A, S P A. Use allowed by special permit from zoning board of appeals with site plan approval.
Yeah.
By who?
Yeah, it kind of gives you when you, when you keep those.
Cause if, if you read it the way they're reading it, Because if, if you read it the way they're reading it, zoning board of appeals with site plan approval. Planning board, it's not, it's not, it's not in board of appeals, it's not their site. And that's where things are getting a little hairy from the gun club, exactly. And the gun club, according to that most recent select board meeting, is already filed with zoning board of appeals for site plan approval. On the upper shelf and the lower shelf, they're certainly, so the definition here is incorrect. The definition here is incorrect, as well as in six point, was it six point two or?
Six point two one. That's.
But at this point in time, can't talk about that, because. That's why it's not, oh, yeah, I need to correct that, it is, it's a conflict. The chart means nothing, but this and six point two point one read differently, and, and that super suits the chart. That's why we're.
So, home occupation, says special permit, I was saying to add planning board there. Number three point seven point one.
You should have said that, your R and G B is as well.
Yeah, well, they have site plan and special permit.
But that's what we just said, we're going to do special permit, we're gonna make recommendation to town here. To change it.
Yes. And.
And I would imagine we're gonna do the same thing for three points seven point one. And three points. I wouldn't, just three point seven point one, on professional office.
We use a portion of the house, the business.
So.
So, do we have S P slash S P A planning board?
I would wish, but that's, that's, it's the same, it's the same thing. But S P slash P B dash S P A, as will sort of the other two. This makes.
Well, well, what I was gonna do is go through the whole chart, and all, and put them all the same way, S P slash S P A.
They're changing every, you're speaking to the residents about changing every single.
It, it just seems confusing.
It is, and, and we, I think, I think we have to do it, because when I just cited. Allowed by special permit from planning board with site plan approval, and then further down, use allowed by special permit from zoning board of appeals with site plan approval. So that's saying, they're saying here, C B A does the site plan approval. What we should do is just amend that one definition, S P slash C B A dash S P A, to read S P slash Z B A, no S P A.
Well, how about S P slash S P A dash Z B A?
No, zoning board of appeals does not do site plan approval.
But we were, we were not gonna go through all of the, the definition like they had it.
I personally don't have anything with it, I don't see any problems with the definitions here.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is, this is the way it's been written, it's written in the chart, it's literally as such. Because it says S P slash P B dash S P A, spells out what it is, and everyone has written that way in the charts.
Except for, to be putting, you know. S P slash Z B A and dash S P A, who?
What, what? It's gotta be amended here, to any definition.
Correct.
Right, that, you know, this has gotta be amended before we update it.
Oh, we're just, we're just defining it, we're not, we're not going with the whole use allowed by permanent board of appeals, we're not gonna do that.
Well, no, they should, S B A should not be with that at all, with Z B A.
Correct, but the way they were talking in the beginning here was taking all of these wording ones, and just S P, special permit, S P A, site plan approval. And you got yes and no, and then the, uh, S B, B S, what is selected, S P.
Selective.
Yes, selective. And that will take care of this, besides that last one, that big long one, S P slash Z B A, S P A slash Z B A, is, I don't know, do look it up, the one, one, two, three, four, on there.
If my memory serves me right, we had a, we had a joint reading, Z B A. About taking them off of the site plan approvals and samples. But there's no one selected here.
Uh, there's only five areas where the Z B A shows up. Three point three point nine has a special permit. Site plan approval, I'm not sure.
Along with three point seven point four.
Three point seven point three?
Yes.
Home shop?
Three point seven five.
Yeah, and three point seven seven, but all the ones that they got just took. Well, site plan, well, except for the three point seven point five says special permit and site plan.
Right, Z B A.
Right, Z B A. But you're saying.
So in other words, a couple that came in from over on Condon Street, should go on the Z B A, not even two of us.
Right, but this is where they were told to go here first. And that's because in that one, under.
Which makes no sense, if you look at three point seven point five, it says special, special permit, zoning board of appeals. For residential, but the, 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 the center, it's special permit, planning board.
Correct. Three point seven point five.
Yeah.
Wow.
So we're gonna do that one, cover it here together. So Jim, you're saying, uh, this Z B A only does special permits?
Or site plan? No, Z B A should, right, Z B A should only be doing zoning.
Correct.
Zoning board of appeals, not site plan, not special permit, well, special permit follows Z B A, if it's, if it's included, zoning board, it's included in board.
So they shouldn't be on there at all? Do you have a private garage?
No, 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 private garage, it's tables over, uh, exceeding twelve hundred square feet. That's a zoning issue. Z B A has to approve. What we do too, we approve the site. Z B A approves whether or not they're allowed, and that's why we always have joint meetings, because they don't, it's just, it goes, it goes back to what I was explaining before about, uh, vehicle sales licenses. The select board issues a license, but they don't know what the issuer's for, until it's a site plan, and the same thing with zoning, board of appeals. They're gonna allow it, but they wanna make sure that the, the site plan is gonna be approved, or something, that turn out to be the, the letters. So three point seven point five should be S P Z B A.
P B.
No, S P A, P B. Special permit is not required from us, only site plan approval for that particular area.
In, uh, in residential general business, can village center?
Well, I don't think so. I think they should all be worded the same.
Yes, I don't think that is, that would be different.
Something unfortunate thing is, is we only have one current number that goes back to when all these proposed changes were, who knows what was behind it? Over the top, I suppose. The same fact is, that is, that behind us is also behind, um.
By owner.
Exactly. We need a whole consulting.
Okay, so we're okay with those, three point seven five and.
Consistent.
Okay, I've got one page.
Yeah, three point seven point five, right?
Yes.
So the both of them are.
That's Z B A, site plan approval, planning board, not all. Okay, save before that, uh, three point seven point two. Which has a long explanation, at the very end, they're going A, B, C, D, um, but they're all mushed together, the building.
When is that?
I, I don't know, I think the, I think the column is wider, longer, and no other words can add, so, I think that's lost in the shuffle. So. They list all of these, um. Types of jobs. Provided that A, B, C, D, no change, F, operations, E, the dentability. Do we wanna lock that off, or?
Yeah, there's a success.
Unless it's part of the second stair, purpose other than residential, except for an accessory sign, something that doesn't count, I guess?
For the building, I guess. For the building, I guess, I think.
Yeah, it does. It's also being backed into its category. Oh, oh, yeah, no, no, that was before these categories were here. So you have to translate the category.
The original one ended with except for accessory sign.
So maybe it's just title? Now, uh, my question there is, um, that same one, it's a village center special permit.
Yeah, well, these residential symbol, just a special permit.
Right.
Two.
The, the Bahul people, on three point seven point two? Residential, it's site plan, planning board, residential.
No, special permit, planning board, yeah, V C is special permit, planning board.
And the V, but not site plan approval, you don't need site plan approval all the way across.
Not necessarily, um. Portion of the, accessory. So basically what they're saying is, is if you're a home, if you're an electrician, it's operating out of your house, you know, you've got to set.
So should we take it out of the? G B?
No, I would leave it there, because G B is a business, now you're talking, you're a business owner, now you're doing something other than that. But it should be, for the village center district, it should be S P slash P B.
That would fit.
And as well as the next one, the board. The next one, the board, in a special permit. That's because, that, that's because that's more of a detail about antique shop, gift shop, hobby shop.
So, Z B A is doing both the site plan and, and.
Right, well, it says, but it was clearly the secondary use of the premises, because it's one of those, you guys are clearly identifying that business having a house.
But the, the special permit approval should be P B. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what we were saying before, yeah, the last.
Will Z B A.
Site plan.
Planning board, special permit.
This, this is, this is a, this is where it's, this is where it's kind of crazy, because. In G B, what do you mean zoning board of appeals for? It's already allowed.
So are we changing that there to? Site plan and, and S P A, planning board, it's gonna be here? And the one, residential, which teams are using that? Residential, not being in the grounds? Should that be a special permit of site plan approval, planning board?
I think so, it's, it's still residential, if you're saying.
Yeah, but we're saying the residential is just gonna be special permit by the Z B A, site plan approved by the planning board.
In residential.
Symbol.
Yeah.
That's what we just said.
But in the next one.
Right.
Residential. Residential.
Should be the same.
Yeah.
Special permit, planning board, site plan. And the extra over in general business locks off, gives everything to the planning board. No, no, and then village center. The, uh, special permit and site plan approval.
I think it should be the same as the residential symbol, residential, well, okay.
Okay, you okay with that?
Yes.
I'm ready. Something like you. Is there any front of, any special notice?
Somehow, this is all going to be formulated to be brought to a hearing. And we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, and I would recommend we have a joint meeting on the zoning board before we go forward with this. Because moving on from anything without their, by. All right, let's be part of it, so.
So, uh.
So before we go any further in any of this.
Do we mind, did it end with these, with the proposed changes?
Yeah, I would, I, I, I'd walk, go through it, yeah, walk them through and forward and then.
Do you want to have Kathy's ready for that one?
Sure.
Yeah. And I'll take out, take out the red. Except that one. So I sent that to him.
Well, I think we'll do it in there.
Well.
Just not, just not confuse our source that you don't need that much. Anything that we're proposing a change to, go ahead and mark it up in red.
Just, um, I need to hear, it's good, it's, we should keep that. So we know.
Exactly.
No, I think this is, to the next one, I, we will stay there.
Got it. Is that what you?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, so there's that one. Now, I'm going to make the, um, W.
Late January, W, it's the June.
January, we're not going to make that, with this, um, we could get it in time to make.
We could definitely make.
Don't get all the rest together, it's just that one, I want it. We still don't have time to get it together, it's the one referring back to this chart, so this chart has to be converted back first. And if nothing else, we can always say, an announcement, ZDA.
Yeah, we, we got, yeah, all that worked out. Bringing in conflict. With, with definition, what this, this zoning board of appeals. Is responsible. Oh, we're doing here, we're not doing.
That's why you see all that, as we just pointed out tonight. That's the point, that's the change.
Now we're going to point, we're going to do it all once. Include everything.
I want you to do it all, I want you to do everything, make all the changes, I mean, or propose all the changes, and then you propose.
So, um, I'll tell Kathy and then Marie won't have any changes from this one.
Not to January, February.
We don't have enough time to be able to, we have to rush through it immediately. Then we'd be cursing and our stuff later on because we didn't change something.
Let's do what wants to do right.
Okay, so I will have that application ready, but we need to, uh, when do you have to meet them? I'm jumping in.
I don't think so.
Do you want to decide that our next meeting will be, are we waiting till then or?
Sorry, that's being viewed first.
I'm sorry, next, next one I have, I'm guessing Thursday's going to be a real quick one, because, have you seen any documents?
Well, how about this, for a late December meeting, we need it open if something comes up.
Yeah, I probably need it, something we need to say.
So.
If, if somebody calls Kathy, wondered, wants to schedule an appointment to contact us and see if we can, if it's, yeah, most important, we meet. As we've done in, yeah.
Give the chair more time to show.
And if, if, or, we, 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 we have, I don't really discuss one.
On January, we would, January or fourteen?
How do you say this, Martin, it's a Sunday, and that all this?
I guess the third, third Monday, third Friday.
I do, we got that.
So.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, yeah, so there, I don't know, come forth, right?
So, the fourteenth, what would you call it?
It does.
And I'm not talking to someone.
No.
Three meetings in one week would be enough.
I think we've done that before.
Yes.
I would recommend.
I like your motion to adjourn.
I'll send you a, like, a common favor.
All right.